I don't have a hammer, could I just get a gun?
Yeah.
Yeah, do it.
There's no, there's no, you know, danger of just wreck.
Do you?
Yeah. When I release.
Well, man, I just.
Is that for yourself, Lynn, or for Penn?
I didn't even have the whiskey.
Okay.
What's that?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Jim. Yeah, want to give us this for prayer? Prayer is off, so, um, Amanda, I thought that we had, like, uh, we thought you had enough data on.
We were planning for that, but ICE consumed everyone's time. Okay. So, well, you have some exactly something that's discussed, but.
Okay. All right, so the regular meeting might be pretty good, so, okay. Called order for our Watertown City Council work session for February 12th, 2024. Uh, we're gonna start, we're gonna give a prayer. And Lynn. Councilor.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this, this new day, this new day to live and breathe and utilize the abilities you've given us, and here we are, those of us gathered in this room for many different reasons, but for one reason, Lord, as, as, as the city of Watertown, as a, as a family, as to unite together, we may have different opinions on things, or different perspectives, but more ultimately, I just pray that we are sensitive to each other as we, as we do our specific jobs and positions in the city, and anybody within the citizen of the city, Lord, as well, that we would just have a mutual respect for all in this city, whatever we, whatever our position is, whatever we are called to do by you. I just pray your guidance and leading here this, this afternoon, and that decisions should be made, that should be put.
I'd like to lead, and to give the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Um, someone called it all. President, I had some surprising.
I got it. Colleen.
Eric.
Durin.
Peter.
Peters.
Pierce.
Chuddy.
Eric.
Pepper.
Eric.
Fielder.
Eric.
Danforth. Absen.
All right, and Councilman Danforth is excused, he had told us he was going to be gone, I don't know where he got it, but he's having fun. Uh, Chair will entertain a motion to approve today's agenda, so, motion made by Councilman Pepper, seconded by Councilman Peters, any discussion on that, Council? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the agenda, all those in here, please say aye. All right, and if you say nay. Aries. We'll move on to regular agenda, of which we have one item on that, and that is a discussion on marijuana fees other than dispensary. I believe we'll go to City Manager Mac for an explanation.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Um, you'll recall during the discussion back in December on the state's, um, fee resolution, at that time, the council, um, decided to lower the annual fee, um, for medical marijuana dispensaries. At that time, there was a, a brief discussion, um, about the other marijuana-related fees that the city has, um, related to manufacturing, cultivation, um, it was requested to bring this back at its work session. Since that time, we've had some conversations with, um, the Wests, uh, and they have provided some, some information to you, while you have it in front of you, um, if, if you're willing, Mayor, I'm sure they would, uh, be willing to speak to this matter. Um, staff is looking for some direction, if you'd like us to prepare a resolution, um, with lower fees, um, for marijuana, um, related activities, uh, to bring that forward to you. Discussion and, um, some direction to staff, what you might see related to those fees specifically.
And just for clarification, what are the other fees?
Twenty, they are twenty-five thousand.
And therefore.
Cultivation, manufacturing, and testing.
Testing.
Yes.
And, but that's twenty-five thousand dollars for one license for all three activities?
It's individual, all true.
Okay. Um, all right, thank you. I have talked with the Wests prior to this meeting, and I told them that it is good that they're here, if we have any questions, I definitely want the council to be able to ask questions. However, I also want to, uh, perhaps guide the discussion, because at the previous hearing, when we talked about lowering the dispensary fees, in my mind, that's the one where a lot of the money could be made, so if we were going to lower those fees, I don't think that there's any reason, any logical argument against also lowering the other fees, because if we are going to lower the dispensary fees, we want the cultivation, we want the tax dollars, and the employees here, or the other aspects of it, so, I am very open if anyone on the council has a disagreement with me on that, but I guess I'm, I'm of the mindset, and I know that I was the biggest argument against lowering the dispensary fees, so, I don't know if the rest of the council is sharing my mindset, but if we lowered one, I think it's only fair to lower the others to match that fee, but I am definitely open to hear others, so, I'm not saying that this is to stifle debate or to questions, but if there is consensus on that, then perhaps we can reach that consensus sooner than later. Not trying to rush things along, but I just want to be aware of everyone's time, so, with that, I will open it up for conversation, questions, Councilman Pepper.
Where did we end up, just to refresh my memory, where did we end up putting the fees on the dispensers?
Five thousand.
Five thousand for.
For the renewal.
Renewal, for the renewal, but we left it at.
Twenty-five for the initial license. And we only, we had three licenses available.
What was the renewal before that, was twenty-five?
And we currently have the other licenses set at twenty-five for the initial and twenty-five for the, we've not administered any of the other licenses.
You know, I would like to invite, you know, someone to just come on up and talk a little bit about it, and just more so be ready for questions, but definitely, uh, tell us what you're thinking and why this would help.
So, to go into the cultivation business, you have to have the three licenses for it to make your business work.
You have to, you have to have cultivation, and makes sense to also have the manufacturing.
Okay, first, yes, to be recognized, yes, too.
Oh, yes. Oh, I'm, uh, Bob West, um, co-owner of Dispensary Watertown. Um, yeah, to, to answer your question, um, you would want to have at least a cultivation and a manufacturing license, a testing license is entirely separate, and that can't have any connection, uh, with the business.
You can't test your own product, yeah, which makes sense, so.
Yeah, it would make sense to have.
Yeah.
It'll be licensed, so.
So, okay. So, Peters, it was twenty-five thousand for all testing, cultivating, what was the third one? So, so it's twenty-five thousand for each one of those?
Yeah.
Through the city?
Yes.
Okay, so seventy-five thousand, is that one time, or is that every year?
As it is right now, if, we weren't open to cultivation and manufacturing, uh, so it'd be twenty-five, each should be fifty thousand dollars every single year, fifty thousand for application, as well as fifty thousand each, each three years.
Okay, so what's the difference between manufacturing and cultivation?
So, cultivation is, uh, the plant itself, uh, the flower, and then through manufacturing, that's where you get some of the medical products, like the tinctures and balms, uh, the oils, as well as like your pedibles, or vapor, vape product, or anything like that.
So it's turning the plant into, uh, other forms, with other consumable products, essentially, so, and it benefits, uh, a cultivation to have that many manufacturing licenses as well, to kind of adapt with the market, um, and with consumer demand. That's, that's the, so, you want to be able to produce all the different products, just to be. This puts you in a slightly odd position, but if you are willing to answer it, and provide what insight you have, where's the money at in this? Is it, I mean, it, so cultivation is the first step, right? Then manufacturing, and then point of sale, which is maybe dispensary, so, perhaps I was wrong, I always thought dispensary would be the most profitable one, but in, where is the money on the cultivation and the manufacturing?
Um, I would say it's, it's pretty well-balanced, um, to be able to do all of it, um, gives you a unique advantage, and gives you control over your own supply chain, and that's ultimately what we're looking for, is to continue to grow our dispensary business, and, and ultimately have that control of, of some of the products that, that we're selling, if not all of them.
Do most cultivators also have manufacturing licenses, or vice versa?
Most of them do, yes, and quite a few of the cultivators already have, uh, many dispensaries as well, there's, uh, well, quite a few bigger operators that have, you know, hand over more dispensaries, as well as the cultivation and manufacturing license.
Sorry for, I have them in multiple cities, right?
Yes.
Most, yes.
Do that.
And diversifying in multiple markets.
Absolutely, and, and like Mayor said, the, the dispensary license does have a unique value, like the city, like Watertown, we have a big, uh, population, as well as a trade area, uh, but manufacturing and cultivation don't really have any, any unique reason to come to Watertown, uh, other, I mean, there's a lot of reasons that, that we want to be here, um, and to have a workforce is a great reason, but at the same time, to pay the fee, it doesn't really make sense, it wouldn't be a good business decision to agree to pay us a fifty-dollar fee every single year, basically, when, uh, your competitors all across the state are, are you physically paying, uh, five and five overboard loans?
Okay. Councilman Pepper, if somebody else hasn't spoken to it.
Is it typical, five and five?
Yes.
Even right now, you have to purchase, because it has to be purchased in South Dakota, you would have to purchase from Deadwood, Sturgis, or.
Yeah.
The other, uh, this manufacturers that are in the state of South Dakota.
And that's actually a, a good example, so, uh, Deadwood is a, is a, uh, market, especially for a dispensary, uh, but the places that have dispensary there, they chose as to have their cultivation and their manufacturing, and favoring smaller cities where the license fees are here and there. Uh, so it, it is, you're, you're, we're right now buying product from any cultivator or manufacturer in the state of South Dakota, and, uh, it would, it would definitely, you know, give us more reason to, to open a business in Watertown if, if people are competitive with, with, you know, cities.
Councilman Peters, what? Councilman Pepper.
Uh, two questions, do you pay safety at that?
Yes, the sa- safety is the same.
Five, five. Five and five, yeah. If we were, I'm just saying, if we were to decide five and five, then you'd be paying ten and ten per year.
Yeah.
Uh, is there a byproduct that comes out of it, other than what recommenders? I mean.
Other than consumable? Any, um, no, uh, any waste byproduct or nothing like that, no, any, any waste that there is, uh, has to be mitigated, and, um, basically, you combine it with, you know, other material, um, other, other waste, so you can throw it away, the state has a pretty specific outline for, for the processes doing that, um, the only other thing would be, uh, getting approval for the waste counter from the facility, and that's something you, you do as well through the state licensing process, is, is get that approval, um, for, um, if you're flushing anything down the drain, it, it's gotta, it's a great circumstance.
Yeah, okay. Councilman Peters. Uh, I see here you're noting that you guys are currently getting supplied by Dakota Natural Solutions in Westington, is that, so, you, you guys would essentially move away from them, and, and, is it a greenhouse, or how, how are they growing?
Uh, they're, they're growing all indoors, um, they're in an old, actually an old school building, uh, greenhouse isn't often in South Dakota, but it's not going to be, uh, the most prevalent, the most, the most likely, it's an indoor, completely indoor, completely sealed and secure facility, uh, and to address your question, we're not only buying from them, uh, I thought they're a great example, only because we, they're oldest partners, we kind of know their business the best, I was able to kind of ask everybody, how's the staff looking, uh, you know, what are things looking like, and they're up in over thirty people right now, uh, at less than two years in the, in the business, uh, I think we're, we're buying from six or seven different companies right now, and we're not looking necessarily to replace all of that, but supplementing.
Just, all it might be for, for Manager Mac, uh, we were going through the, uh, the reducing of fees for the.
It's country.
Yes, uh, we looked at other communities, we know what other communities are doing.
Um, turning is quickly perusing, we look at dispensaries, but not necessarily the cultivation and manufacturing, Aberdeen is lower, let's see, um, the cultivation fee is five thousand, and their license fee for the dispensary is fifteen, they might have now lowered it to ten, but basically, their cultivation fee is lower than their dispensary.
What did you say, what do you?
Five.
Five thousand. I think the goal was.
Five, seven, five.
Five as well.
I remember from testing, what did you find, that they had two or three licenses out, and they're down to one?
Uh, in.
Four dispensaries, I mean, they haven't survived.
Is that correct, that there's, there were, there were five licenses issued, there's currently three, and there are two in actual operation.
Okay.
And Brookings was, Brookings had one spot, that, that might be the example you're thinking of, they had four or five initially, uh, and it's down to, so one.
Um, maybe costs and that, we got into a heavy conversation of cost to the city, cost to the taxpayer, but revenues, we haven't really talked revenue much, have we? Where other than sales taxes, their revenues are?
Or only revenue. All of this would be, yeah, property tax, and then the licensing fees, what would, what would bring in.
You could also potentially argue that if they hire more people, then you have more people that's going to be paying their money, and that for me is the attractive part, because a dispensary, yes, you have a couple people working behind the booth, but it's retail, this could be, I have a hard time, I, I just say, manufacturing to me, I picture other businesses in Watertown, not this one, but with that said, if it's going to be grown somewhere, I'm okay having it, I'd rather have the people paying taxes here in Watertown, and Watertown having some control over it, that's kind of where I'm at. I still think that the dispensary license, we're not talking about that, but that is slightly separate with the cost, the upfront cost, but.
Quick one, please. You said you want a Westin's at an old schoolhouse?
Yeah.
Probably not the first time I've seen it growing, it's. High heels.
Oh, boy.
It's pretty unconstrived. You mean in the seventies?
Sorry, I'm a little old, right? Um, so the renewal fee is spearfish for cultivation, testing, what I was also five thousand.
The initial.
Yeah, let's see.
Initial application fee. So the way that they, most of the municipalities do it is, they just talk about medical establishments in general, and then they just establish a set fee, and then they basically then talk about other criteria for each thing, which usually has to do with zoning and population, depending on what they're trying to do, cultivate, manufacture, test, um, so, for this purposes, at least here, the application fee is five, and the renewals are five, so, they just kept it consistent.
Councilman Miller.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, what, what is the reason for collecting these fees? Please, for the other three parts of this.
There is an administrative process that they have to go through, specifically related to zoning, um, it's similar to what would require, yeah, someone who's requesting to be zoned, or.
Yeah, that much money into that, it costs that much money, five thousand dollars, and then an additional five thousand every year beyond that. I struggle with that, I, I just think, to me, I don't know, I'd like to know where, what we're doing with that money, why are we collecting that money? You know, I think somebody brought it up one time, we don't do that for the coin, you know, so why are you, I, I, that's my question.
I think that's a question for me to answer, and it's a question for you all to answer, if that's philosophical.
Well, I feel if it's, if it's something that they, that the city feels they need for revenue, I want to know what that's for, that's all.
Well, I, um, when we had the discussions, when we first moved into the medical marijuana realm, um, the thought was this is transitioning very quickly into adult use, and so, we need to have parameters, and that is from our law enforcement to recoup those costs, if there's, um, inspections, you know, things like that, we do charge fees for a lot of things, you know, we raise our, um, building permit fees annually, we charge if you're gonna all, ask for a special meeting and plan admission, or the board of adjustment, um, so, it does recoup staff time, um, the technology that we use, I mean, since it doesn't cover overhead, and you gotta remember, we only have three licenses, so it's, it's not like it's that everyone can come in and equip, um, but as far as what the, what amounts are charged, or if you charge at all, that's really up to you all, staff did recommend almost three years ago that, that these fees be five thousand dollars, not twenty-five, so, that was the recommendation then, um, but because it was the unknown, I understand what everything was made that it was.
Well, I know, I know your, your comments, you know, earlier discussions that we had about the twenty-five thousand dollars for the dispensaries, you know, that was, that's what we did that for, I think, was to hopefully group some costs, perhaps from, uh, human service issues, or, or law enforcement, but as far as, uh, beyond that, with these other, with the, the, the testing, manufacturing, cultivating, I don't know that, that we would have to do that, I guess I'm, I'm for, I mean, if we don't know what we're doing, or why we need it, or what the actual costs are for, for having these things, this type of activity, then I, I just have to question whether or not we need to charge it, and I think, yeah, I mean, that's obviously, I see.
So the only, the only point I guess that I can make about it is, it would be similar, and the fee, I, that's up to you guys to determine, but part of the reason for tracking it and the fee is, you know, with the state, they have to have a license, similar to our liquor, so, I mean, that's part of that process, too, is we submit to the state that they're now licensed within the city, so as far as what the fee is for that renewal, that's up to you guys to determine, but it is a process that the finance office does, similar to liquor, any of your malt beverage, all of that, so it's a licensing process, and the state does require that we track it, so.
And the state, sorry, the, the state also charges their fees on top of it, so.
Right.
Just so everybody's understanding, yeah, it's two separate.
Yep, two separate ones.
So, so that's another thing you got, these folks have to pay.
Yep.
Councilman Chuddy has been waiting?
Oh, yeah, so, you know, we have a limit of three on our dispensaries, so I'm gonna refresh my memory, but we have unlimited, uh, manufacturing, cultivating.
So.
So that's unlimited in there? So just to.
We couldn't settle a limit?
Well, I, because this is, this is, um, when we set the limit on the dispensary, it was based on, well, I mean, what's the need, which is hard to know what the need is, but what's the need for a city our size, our size, and we talked about law before we run, and if, if three was enough to be able to fill our needs for, for this community and this region, we felt that would be enough, so that's why we set it for three, well, this manufacturing, cultivating could be take off, it could be end up being a hub for manufacturing, cultivating, if, that's just a segue, or any region could be that way, there's no limit, I guess, is there wisdom in that or not, as far as in our city, to have a, have a, a limit on that, too, as well, so, just bringing that out.
I think if I remember the conversation correctly, it's been a long time ago, when we did discuss that, the thought was the cost of entry into manufacturing and cultivation was prohibitive enough that the market itself would determine how many manufacturing facilities there were, I, you might have better.
That's why I'm bringing this, I guess this, this changes that narrative, so.
Turn your turn, you wanted to say something?
Oh, thank you, Mayor, um, just that, uh, the zoning of the cultivation and manufacturing is, we, uh, my understanding is severely limited, so it was basically, that would also dictate the amount of locations that they could have, because they're gonna be foreclosed from doing it in a lot of areas, uh, we do know that the Wests had been exploring that, and there was limited areas in which they could do that, because I was working with Brandy on that, so.
Yeah, it would probably be like a, a.
Yeah, I believe the only location we have even pondered right now was south of, uh, Tuftall.
Councilman. So, Chuddy brings up a good point, is there any communities don't honor, sure, how much cultivation there, have you been here?
About some fentanyl, I should all.
I kind of look at it like ethanol, right, we don't, we don't limit the ethanol plants, but the, much ethanol goes in gas, because that's what the market supplies, I'm just curious, uh, and then you mentioned, go ahead.
The only conversation I've had with my peers is around dispensaries, and some, some communities are open, they have no limits, and there are several like Watertown with a cap on.
So law enforcement's been mentioned a few times, have we seen impact on law enforcement that would justify the fees, to say, we, specifically with this, we've had more stops, more calls, more whatever, that would justify?
They don't also, we.
Actually, I, I had the same question, I'm sorry, but because with dispensaries, and I might be wrong, and, but that would be how people get their hands on it, so that is where, if my, again, I know nothing about that, so, but that, to me, would be where some of the societal and police enforcement costs would come in, don't know, I, and I'd be, will, I'd be open to learning more about if, is, there is a enforcement cost or procedural cause associated with growing the plant.
Yeah, I, I would, I guess where I'm going with this is, I would be hard pressed to say, you know, we're not gonna lower the fees unless Chief Toomey says, well, this is how much it's costing us.
Well, as it relates to manufacturing and cultivation, we don't have any, and so we don't have any metrics to track that against. And, um, it's my understanding, so, also, when we were initially going through this, the thought was that local police were going to inspect these dispensaries, um, that is not the case, now, you need the state handles that, um, and so, I, I don't want to speak for Chief Toomey, um, he and I have had just a few conversations about this, yeah, they pulled people over who would, you know, clearly ingested something, um, but to say that there's been, that, you can't really, you can't necessarily equate that to the dispensaries, again, these, these fees, and when we had these discussions, um, you know, the Supreme Court was debating if medical, or excuse me, if recreational marijuana was gonna be a reality or not, and so I think we know now that that's not the case, um, it'll be out of the ballot again, that may come future, um, but what we have in front of us is non-recreational, so that's, that's what we have to make our decisions on.
Okay, I'll go with Turney, Karen.
Yes, uh, just to talk about the fee, and perhaps, uh, apart from the law enforcement, my, at least something to consider would be, you'd have an enforcement mechanism with the code enforcement officer, and probably, um, building inspector, just because the requirements for the cultivation have to do with making sure that they have proper disposal, and proper ventilation, the ventilation is not supposed, you know, because you're not supposed to smell it from a property line, kind of thing, so it would be more of a enforcement of those type of situations, in my opinion, versus someone breaking in, or stealing product, running around with it, um, I think it would be more just an annual or biannual spot check, if that's what the city chose to do, to have, because right now, most of our enforcement is based upon, um, citizen complaints, um, for any type of building code, or other type of ordinance violations, um, unless the police happen to, you know, encounter it themselves just in the day-to-day operations, so, that would be something that would be new to us, um, and that would be just, I think, added expense.
Okay, in a row, Councilman Pepper, Fielder, and Karen.
Part of the, you know, first off, when we, we had the discussion last Council meeting, uh, if you, if you remember, right, Chief Toomey was there, and he couldn't really, to my recollection, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, really tie anything to the availability of your dispensary, standing law enforcement cost, right? Uh, yeah, they have had some arrests, but whether or not that was somebody that had, uh, medical marijuana, or whether they had legal marijuana. Part of the, you know, in my mind, part of the original discussion on the fees that we've set for, for the dispensary license began, like, was, that was the integrity of the license, so we can keep, you know, if we make it, two thousand dollars or nothing, two thousand dollars or nothing, is, is, I didn't say, Mr. Bealer said nothing, but if we make it too small, then everybody and their dog wants to get into it, and do we have that's integrity? You know, we want to make sure that we, we keep the integrity of the license order itself, so, so. And I know there's checks and balances for that, but, but, uh, I don't know, I guess I'm kind of with the mayor when, when it comes down to the city water town, I still have a business that's gonna employ thirty people, getting it from Western. What that fee would be, I don't know. The, the twenty-five is kinda high now. Take it back to twenty-five, we set for the dispensaries is probably a little high, knowing that there's only what, twelve hundred cardholders in the state or something like that, maybe thirteen, thirteen hundred, you know? So we had no idea what it was gonna be like when we set dispensary fees. Of course, at that time, we were also looking at if they're gonna turn into recreational marijuana, but. You know, it hasn't been an issue recreably, if and when it ever becomes recreational. I think at that point, we could go back and revisit the fees, because then it's a whole different, whole different, uh, set of rules we're playing by, because that's when you're gonna see the social issues that the police department has to deal with.
The, the revenue component changes also with recreational, see some kind of sales tax influx on the, okay, other states you see.
Councilman Bealer? Councilman Jurs?
Wheels seem to be falling off. We're kind of going down that rabbit hole. Dispensaries. Yeah, I think we're talking about manufacturing and cultivation. And so, um, I know five thousand gets thrown around a lot, but why wouldn't we wanna be different than other cities? Why wouldn't we wanna be like, you know, ninety-five percent? And maybe we should discuss, should this be a thousand? Uh, the only expenses I've heard so far are maybe some administration fees. I haven't heard any other expenses, maybe some code enforcement, that's the same as any other manufacturer. That regulation, right, or am I wrong?
Uh, we don't license other, other manufacturers, um, that's a state requirement, so that's, that's a difference.
Yeah, so they spend their manufacturing, cultivating, they, right now, they think they're, they're medical marijuana. Can they be used, let's just say if the recreational were to be approved, can they be used for, they can supply both sides of it then, is that?
It, it depends on the legislation, to be quite honest. If the two bills that are being petitioned get, get passed, then yeah, we're, we're a long, long way away from that, so. Okay, ultimately, it would be up to the, the state bills that got passed.
Oh, so on that thought, again, just law before the run, so let's just say it were to go that direction. And since we're talking about the ordinance, the fees, which it's obvious we're looking at over the fees, the way it looks. But again, back to the, you know, you look at the city and where we can do, uh, where this, where the city allows parameters. I mean, is it two places in town, five, ten, twenty? I guess it'd be nice to know kind of what those parameters are, as far as what we have for options, because again, if we just put the ordinance and have unlimited, and this, and lower the fee or whatever it may be, which part of it was to, and I keep that, not too many. And let's just say recreational does pass. You, you could say, yeah, or there could be, is there a floodgate? Maybe not, I don't know. But these are the questions I have as far as parameters, is it, is it very limited? What's very limited being two, five, ten? And, uh, and again, if it does work, we can supply both, that definitely opened the doors for what that may look like. You have more thoughts on this subject matter?
I think you'll find a gate to your, by councilman, I think, uh, the zoning is gonna these activities, but I, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna throw out a proposal here. It's gonna go till midnight. I could want this, um, I'm thinking twenty-five hundred bucks on, on the, uh, the first, I'm in front end and a thousand dollars, but, you know, that's my suggestion.
Versus that, your license, or her license?
Her license, yes, for, if you have testing facility or you have manufacturing, so your cultivating facility would be twenty-five hundred bucks, or it'd be a thousand dollars annually to redo after that.
Okay, I'll wait just a second to take that as an official motion, because I didn't have, Councilman Peters wanted to make a comment prior to that motion being made, and I went, no, no.
Yeah, I'm just actually gonna say the same thing Councilman Bealer did as far as the zoning. If we could put a warrant that said conditional use could be necessary for them, if it's a cultivation business to come forward, I think it's only a, essentially, in their home. They don't just get to come in. I don't either, I'm just suggesting.
Not if it beats the parameters and the, it's, it's on, it's permitted, yeah.
It's permitted use under. That's in, that's permitted use. Anyway, it's just agriculture.
It, it, this global discussion, I think it's just something, as if there's a concern, you get to monitor it through the zoning.
So, okay, we're not doing official motions tonight, so we're not doing a second or anything. Councilman Bealer proposed a two thousand five hundred dollar upfront first time application fee, a one thousand dollar renewal fee annually. So that is, I'm in favor of lowering it, I made that clear in the get-go. So I wasn't quite going that low, but I don't. The, the caution that I would have is we are operating in a world that we do not have recreational use in South Dakota right now, but it's just a matter of time. It will pass on the ballot sooner than later, probably this year. Uh, if not this year, then the next time it's elevated, it's, it's just a matter of time. So I do think that these licenses have value that are above and beyond medical, but maybe that is a situation where we can tackle that when it happens. But at the time, I'll still, I'll still stand by that, I'd rather have these jobs in Watertown than elsewhere.
Just one more, since there's no motion, maybe a suggestion, just maybe relevant out is we, we take, we look at lowering the fees, we bring it to council, debate there. I mean, what is the next step for us if we're not taking?
I, I think if we can all agree roughly upon what the cost, we've got a twenty-five hundred upfront and a thousand, you know? I think if that's the guidance that we want, then we can tweak that at council rather than have this same debate as to pinpointing a number. We have a number proposed, if we don't have a problem with that, let's bring that number forward. It just makes it easier at, for an actual discussion at council. Uh, Councilman Jurs first?
I'll just add on, uh, Bruce talked about zoning. Uh, that's one, but the market, the buildings available. I mean, there, the, the, the cost of entry has been talked about. There's a lot of other forces that, that, that the free market are going to put on this, on top of what Bruce said. And I would support, uh, I would be on record to support where Bruce is adding with, um, down, first, kind of the number I had written down. Bruce, we didn't even talk.
Never seen you in my life.
I guess I'm just curious when the next work session is gonna be when the dispensary license holders see that number, you know, they guys have put over, they see that, I want to lower it to five hundred dollars. It seems like Bruce can, you know? It's like, I mean, why not keep it in the very least same dispensaries? Why is that? It's just, I'm going, you know, I just, yeah, just where's it coming from as far as this direction?
Councilman Beal? Uh, just, uh, curious, the, right now, the state fee for, you know, the other testing, manufacturing, cultivating is, what is the fee for that annually? Is it five thousand?
Five thousand.
Every year?
Yeah.
And what is the introduction cost for that, for those three?
The application, that also apply.
Okay, so, so keep that in mind, there ain't that much for the state as well, so. Councilman Tupper?
Uh, do you, what do you spend, see, why is period dispensary fee?
Uh, five.
Yeah, five every year?
Yep.
And five upfront?
Yep.
So my comment, and, and not to disagree with your Councilman Bealer, but being a little bit to what Councilman Shoney said, now we're gonna open a floodgate with dispensaries. Uh, and you kind of made that comment to begin with. I think maybe Councilman Bealer's are a little bit too low, in my opinion, I'd like to assume like C five and five. Uh, and, and and, uh, if any dispensary fees or any new applicants would come in to go with that, because when we set those fees, we, we didn't know what we didn't know.
Oh, but this, this, the dispensary licenses are all taken.
Yep, but I mean, if somebody else were to come in, instead of making them pay that twenty-five upfront and, uh, five renewal, I would assume, you know, if we're gonna go this route, make them fairly even, because I know we're gonna open up a big can of dispensary, so. And, you know, our mayor, maybe the number's twenty-five, twenty-five, I don't know. But I think we better be willing to look at dispensary fees again if we do this, so.
And we won't get too much into dispenser fees, I don't think we've reached a consensus quite yet, that's my view.
No, my question was, well, you get to dispensary, because the previous action only lowered the renewal fee.
Yeah.
Um, when we bring something to you, do you want to lower the application fee for dispensaries as well? I mean, I'm trying to prevent another meeting. Um, but if you're gonna tackle it all, you might as well tackle it all at once, but.
Councilman Jurs?
Dispensaries are totally different than these discussions. The, 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 the cost, the cost of, of hu- human service, the cost of all kinds of little issues can, can rise quickly, but.
But your business, this business is supplying the dispensaries, so it's, we're getting a couple different ways.
Okay, but I ain't supplied right now. And that's, and that's my, from my friends, the manufacturing place in the Black Hills, and, and it's, it's.
Sounds like a conveyor.
Yeah. Let's, let's fight against the Black Hills, I mean, so.
I, I guess in reply to the city manager's question is, in my mind, the dispensaries is different because like, we've been talking about the free market and how zoning will dictate the free market when it comes to cultivation and manufacturing. With dispensaries, we also have limitations in zoning, but we purposely cap the licenses at three to bring extra value, because in scarcity, there is value. If you're one of only three restaurants in town, you're going to be making a lot more money than a town with a hundred and fifty restaurants selling. That is, I guess, my understanding, but the thing is, there are hundreds of dispensaries in South Dakota that a cultivator and manufacturer could sell to. I would, and that's why it's different, because I'd rather have Watertown providing these other dispensaries than Watertown being provided from an out of state, or an out of city. So I guess that's where, I, I will contend that it's still different, and I don't wanna, because if we're gonna lower the dispensary upfront cost too, then we're going to also have the debate about lifting the cap on three, and I don't wanna have that debate right now.
Councilman Beal?
Yeah, maybe to wrap this up, I think what the discussion is, is we all agree that we should be lowered.
Yeah.
I think there's some concern that we're gonna open the floodgates for people to come in. I guess the question is, and maybe just something to think about as we're talking about lowering fees, is this an industry we want in Watertown? Because if it is, why wouldn't we lower the fees to help them come in if it's not? That's the barrier, I mean, I think that's what's now being answered, is what do we want this industry? So I would just give that to my fellow councilmen, a two-one, report to the next councilman.
Just had to question, Councilman Peters, uh, I'm pretty sure that Councilman Jurs, Councilman Bealer are a bit closer to the twenty-five, one thousand. I believe Councilman Shoney and myself are closer to five. I think Councilman Tupper's closer to five. And I, it, I'm just looking to give that a number to bring forward, and then if we want to, because we have one councilman that's not here, don't know where he would stand on that, but I, we're all in agreement to lowering it, I guess, do we go with the lower fees at twenty-five and one, or five and five?
Five and five.
If that, go ahead.
Or twenty-five.
I would just make a recommendation, it, it feels easier to lower things, so I would start maybe a little higher, and then if you choose during your discussion to lower it, I'd maybe start at five thousand for the application and twenty-five.
Let's, let's save that recommendation.
Yeah, okay.
Attorney Carroll, did you have something?
Oh, no, just we, uh, I did get an answer from Brandy, so it's a special permitted use for in the I one and the I two, so they don't need to go to the BOA or the PC, as long as it's within that and meets the criteria, zoning fee or whatever, then we're good.
I'm good with five and twenty-five.
Five, yes, if I start, I don't know, this purpose of the discussion.
Other purposes of discussion, yeah, right?
We will prepare a resolution.
All right, thank you, council. Uh, you can tell, or be direct, yes, and you fix. So future council items right ahead. Do you want to come next?
Yeah, it's a, um, overview of lots of help for the twentieth, a reminder that the meeting will be on the twentieth, not the nineteenth. We've got essential junior team lease, we've got banking services agreement, um, a couple of heist agreements, some amendments to the taxi cab ordinance that the police has been working on, and then the, um, redesign bid and construction admin contract with TSP for the Falls Hardaway project. Questions, oh, and Fifth Avenue, um, design work will be on, on management. Questions about those items prior to the agenda going out or prior to the twenty?
Fifth Avenue is Northwest, right?
Let me look it up.
Whoa, right back.
Um, it's, it's, it's Fifth Avenue, this contract is just for the design, it wouldn't be constructed until twenty twenty-five.
All right, any questions on that? So any public comment, if there's anyone who would like to come forward and tell us what the idiots here now that you're trying to do so?
I'll write it later. All right, apparently hearing none at this time. I will close public comment. Uh, I will, we do have a reason going to executive session for a contract called issue, so the chair will indicate a motion. So, maybe that number, Peter's second, best second, uh, Councilman Bealer. Uh, any conversation on that? Oh, and we will not be taking any action when we come out, uh, and that is one of the. So, with that said, all those in favor of going into executive session, please say aye. Any votes say nay? All right, we are at executive.